I don't know why, it's at 6:29 in my zone.
You're live, Dr. Pallada.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our school committee meeting. 6:30, would you all please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Allegiance to the flag, United States of America. To the republic. One nation.
Liberty, justice for all.
Indivisible, justice for all.
Before we, before we begin the meeting and the approval of minutes, I'd just like to take this opportunity on behalf of the school committee to recognize our spelling bee winners. I know that Mr. Sight Singer will speak to it at the beginning, but we, we offer to the parents and the students to tune in this evening. So not to hold them up towards the end of the meeting. I just want to take the opportunity to recognize Max Ramirez, who was our spelling bee winner. And our runner-up was Nina O'Mano. And on behalf of the school committee, students, we want to congratulate you on your achievement and your accomplishment in coming in first and second place. We'd also like to congratulate your parents on behalf of the school committee. And we wish both students continued success. And on behalf of the whole district and the school committee, thank you for your participation and thank you for your achievement and accomplishments. I know that you've already received a trophy and a certificate. And I'm sure Mr. Sight Singer will speak to that during your report. But I just wanted to give our thank yous on behalf of the school committee. If, if, if the students are online or their parents are online, I welcome you to have any comment if you wish at this time.
Please raise your hand if you're one of the parents or students.
No.
I got, we got a few here, Dr. Pallada.
Okay.
I'll let them in.
Yes. You just identify yourself.
Max, go ahead and talk. You can speak.
Um, I just want to say thank you to all, to you all. Um, this probably wouldn't have been possible without you guys, so. Thank you so much.
Very good, Max. Congratulations. Good job. Is Nina there?
Zachary is here, but I'm asking him to unmute, but he's not unmuted.
Okay.
Sorry, it wouldn't let me.
Okay, that's it, Ralph?
Go ahead, Zachary, you can speak now.
Uh, what am I supposed to say?
You want to congratulate Max and Zachary?
Oh, congratulations, Max.
Okay, very good. Nice job. Good friend. Well, thank you very much. Okay. Moving on to approval of minutes. The open session, January 27th, the special meeting. January 27th, the regular meeting. And February 3rd, the special meeting. Chair entertain a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Andriozzi, seconded by Mr. Pollak. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those, the motion carries. We have no correspondence. We have no public comments. Item number six, consent agenda. Chair entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. De Silva.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corsini and Mr. Andriozzi.
Thank you.
Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All. Motion carries. Item number seven, superintendent's report. Mr. Gojo.
Thank you, Dr. Pallada. First item on the agenda is the recognition of our PTEC students. As you know, this program is now in its fourth year. It has developed beyond our wildest imagination to be a model for the state. We really are excited about the fact that we're going to be graduating our first cohort of students this year. But there has been one milestone that occurred in the fall regarding a number of our students earning their CNA certificates. So at this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to our director of multiple pathways, Mrs. Melissa Cafrey, who will tell you about the accomplishments of the students whom that, whom the school committee and the school district would like to recognize tonight. So Ralph, if you can allow Mrs. Cafrey.
She's coming in now, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, Superintendent Gojo. And good evening Chairman Dr. Pallada, Vice Chairman De Silva, and members of our school committee. I am honored and humbled this evening to present to you 12 remarkable young women who made history at North Providence High School by becoming the first ever certified nursing assistants as part of the PTEC program in health science. Over the last two years, PTEC has partnered with American Safety and Training Programs led by Mr. Al Peterson. Mr. Peterson and his staff have worked collaboratively with me to establish both the CNA and EMT certification program for our students in the PTEC program. These young ladies, which I will name momentarily, were part of the very first CNA class at NPHS that began in September of 2019. Additionally, they are also part of my very first cohort of students in the PTEC program, which, like Mr. Gojo said, are graduating this year. When this program began just about four years ago, these students took a risk in becoming part of a pathway that had many unknown variables. Since then, the program has grown from our original 38 students, in which these lovely ladies are part of, to now 165 students across grades nine through 12. These young ladies have set an amazing precedent for other students to follow in their footsteps. A quick story, but I feel it's an important one to tell to truly understand the commitment and the drive of these students. As the first cohort to be part of the CNA class last September, the certification requirements consisted of a total of 125 hours. Eighty-five of those hours were lecture-based, and 40 of those hours were practicum clinical hours in which they actually began in local nursing homes in our community before the outbreak of COVID-19. As you are aware, March 13th, 2020, was the day we were sent home and distance learning began. These 12 students continued with their lecture hours until the end of the school year. However, they were not able to partake in the clinical rotation. Once American Safety and Training became an approved testing site under the Rhode Island Department of Health and CDC protocols, their instructor Jessica Norris reached out to me in early July. All 12 of these motivated students spent most of this past July and August in hands-on lab sessions, safely performing the competencies required of nursing assistants, completing the 40 clinical hours at the American Safety and Training Facility. Additionally, once all 125 hours were completed, Ms. Norris eagerly got them ready for the state exam in which we had a 100% successful passing rate. I cannot say enough wonderful words about these students who have demonstrated such commitment, passion, enthusiasm, ambition, as well as extraordinary diligent work ethic during a pandemic. They overcame every obstacle, they never gave up, and they strive to reach just one of the many goals in the PTEC program at the high school. These young ladies have also taken collegiate classes at CCRI working towards their associate degree in health science while in high school and also taking the certification classes. They truly represent college and career readiness. So without further ado, I present to you our very first CNAs. I will read their names to you. We have Renata Andre, Juliana Barry, Amber Casey, Imena Castro, Amelia Davis, Annette Gueye, Rachel Mayer, Jaclyn Nolan, Camilla Panero, Talia Santamarro, Harris Smith, and Amari Stewart. My sincerest congratulations to my students and their families who have made me incredibly proud in so many ways. Seeing them in their navy blue and gold scrubs representing our school, representing our community is an image I don't think I will ever forget. And as I get older, they are now going to have to take care of me as CNAs. Also, I would just like to thank Mr. Al Peterson and Jessica Norris for working with us. This partnership has been extremely vital and extremely instrumental to our program at the high school. We currently have 29 juniors who will be taking this exam hopefully this summer, hoping to have more students follow in the footsteps of these remarkable young ladies who have paved the way for our future students. Thank you.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments? Melissa, when the program first started, the first year, how many students that were in the program?
Thirty-eight.
And how many do you have in the program now?
165.
Wow. That's over a four-year period?
Correct. Yep, grades nine through 12.
And the, taking the classes at CCRI has been going very well?
Excellent.
No glitches?
We have, we have over, currently right now, we have over 80 students at CCRI through virtual learning that are taking classes while they're in high school. And we have our CNA class running. And we also have our very first EMT class that is running this year with, with my seniors in the PTEC program. I know Mr. Pollak likes that.
And you're gonna, you're gonna add pathways to the program next year?
Yes. So in addition to PTEC, we are currently running computer science. We have pre-engineering. We have our Marines Trades Program, which is the feeder program with Birchwood Middle School. And in September, we are bringing in business financial management. And hopefully the following year, it'll be law and public safety.
Very good. And this the first year that you incorporated the middle school?
Yes, the middle schools will beginning, will begin their gateway courses starting in the fourth quarter. They are running CTE classes that consist of design and modeling, computer science for innovators and makers, medical detectives, automation and robotics, and energy and the environment. Both at Ritchie and Birchwood.
Excellent. Very good. Does anyone else have any questions or?
I just wanted to say congratulations and thank you, Mrs. Cafrey. And, and she does a tremendous job with the program. And we're really excited about expanding the pathways for our middle school students and then, you know, just growing the programs, which she's done a tremendous job with. And I want to give her thanks for helping us with the Marine Trades as well, because I'm now the co-chair of the advisory committee. So I appreciate her guidance and support with that. But congratulations to all the students. That's wonderful. And thank you again, Mrs. Cafrey.
Thank you very much.
Mr. De Silva?
I was just gonna say, it sounds very ambitious and sounds very professional. And high school sure has changed since I went to high school, so. Congratulations to all of these aspiring professionals. And I'm very touched by it. I think it's excellent.
Thank you.
Did I see somebody else's hand? No. Well, on behalf of the school committee, Mrs. Cafrey, thank you for everything that you've done with this program, starting off from scratch and building it to where it is today, from 35 to 155 students. The word certainly has got around about the success of the program. And on behalf of the school committee, we certainly want to thank all those CNA students. And what I'd like to do at this time is, at some point, we will give them a school committee citation. And I'm going to read this for the committee and the general public and for the students. This is the general citation from the school committee for those students. The Town of North Providence School Committee Citation. Be it hereby known to all that the North Providence School Committee hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to, and then it mentions the student's name, for becoming one of the first licensed CNAs through the North Providence High School PTEC Pathways Program. The entire membership extends its very best wishes on this memorable occasion and expresses the hope for continued success. Proposed this 24th day of February 2021, signed by Superintendent of Schools Joseph Gojo and myself as school committee chairman. So congratulations to all those students and thank you for setting a great example for the remainder of the students who aspire to this program. Thank you very much and the best of luck to all of you. And thank you, Mrs. Cafrey, for that report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Cafrey. Thank you, Dr. Pallada.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Amazing.
Next item on the agenda is the recognition of our fall athletes who made some notable accomplishments in this past sport season. Mr. Glenn Williams, our athletic director, had a conflict arise with the swim team having to participate in a playoff swim meet this afternoon and this evening, as well as indoor football practice, which we are glad has, has begun as well. So he asked me to read the following statement before we recognize the students through their, through their coaches. On behalf of the athletic department, I would like to thank you for having us here this evening. It's truly an honor to represent you, North Providence High School outstanding student athletes for the fall of 2020. Mr. Williams goes on to say that I can only say that the fall of 2020 was by far the most suspenseful season in his 16 years as athletic director. From one week to another, one never knew if the visiting team would be allowed to play or postponed to another day due to so many protocols that we live with in this age of COVID. One thing for sure, our athletes and all of our programs never put our teams in a situation where we had to consider postponing an event. This is truly a testament to how our student athletes and coaches followed all protocols set by RIDO and the Interscholastic League, and we are all very proud of them. Most importantly, our student athletes have forged memories and friendships while getting a chance to participate in a sport that they enjoy and have some normalcy in their lives. At the end of each season, the coaches association of every sport meet to determine which student athletes made the biggest contribution to their respective teams. Based on their overall league play, teams are allotted a number of positions for all division selection. Coaches must submit student athlete names, and the coaches association as a whole votes on who they will recognize as their all-division selection. So our fall season has had recipients from two teams. And at this point, I will turn the presentation over to our first presenter, who is the head coach of the boys soccer team who went undefeated this school year. And that is Coach Christopher Swizzwitz. So Ralph, if you can unlock Coach Swizzwitz to recognize his athletes. Thank you, Mr. Gojo. Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee for this opportunity to recognize these student athletes for their individual accomplishments and the team's success. This is obviously a challenging year that I'm happy to report was met with dedication, passion, and most importantly, a focus on safety. I have to personally thank my two assistant coaches, Gervin and Josh Pineda, for an amazing job this year, as always. This team was a joy to coach all season. And while we came up short of our goal, we have an extremely strong core of players returning and ready to take the next step forward. Because of the COVID challenges, we are actually closer now to the start of next season than we were to the original start of this one. And I, for one, can't wait to get back out there. I'd like to recognize a few of our players for their individual accomplishments this year. Santino Artiello was named to the third-team all-division. Bruno Texiera and Captain Josh Souza were named to the second-team all-division. Juana Savedo, Captain Nico Upeggi, and Captain Zach Osslander were named to the first-team all-division. And additionally, Zach was named to the all-division all-academic team. He is one of 15 players in the state to be named to the all-academic all-state team. Congratulations, gentlemen. Thank you again for this opportunity and your continued support of Cougar Athletics. Coach Swizzwitz, I just have one question for you. Yes. How many years have you been affiliated with the boys soccer team at North Providence High School? So this was my 22nd year as a, either a head coach, assistant coach, or volunteer coach. If you put in my four years of playing, 26 years total. Yeah, so I knew all of that. So I thought when the school committee and the public looked at you and heard that information, they would be astounded by that. So again, you're a class act. You've been, you've been very loyal to the high school and to our kids and to our community. So we really do truly appreciate the time and effort that you give to our student athletes. And congratulations to your team and to the students that you just mentioned as well.
And Christopher, thank you for your commitment and loyalty, Christopher. And congratulations to you and your team on behalf of the school committee. Thank you.
Congratulations, Chris.
Thank you.
It's greatly appreciated.
At this time, I would ask the girls soccer team and their head coach, Kaba Juuf, to give us a little bit of information about the accomplishments of his female soccer players this year. So Ralph, if you can unmute Kaba Juuf, who is on the line.
Here he comes now, sir.
Is he there, Ralph?
Yep, he just has to unmute, sir. There you go.
Oh.
You just, there you go.
Sorry about that. I got locked off. First of all, thank you very much to the school committee. It's just been, for me, it's been great. This is my fourth year with the North Providence School Department and also with the girls' coach. One of the things that I just want to say is thank you very much to Gojo and also the principal and also Glenn. It's been a challenging year with COVID and all the protocols. So they were very helpful in making sure at least we had a successful season. It was a tough season. We basically have one of the youngest teams in our division, which is Division Two. We ended up by making it all the way to the quarterfinals. We lost. But with all that said, the girls were just wonderful. We ended up having 21 players. Out of the 21, seven were freshmen. One of the things that impressed me with North Providence High School, especially being somebody that doesn't work for the school department, is for the girls' team, out of the 21 players, we had 12 players that are on the honor roll. And this, this just has been ongoing since I took over the girls' soccer team. It's just, you know, for me, coming from Shea High School, where I used to be the assistant for the boys for a couple of years, it's a, you know, breath of fresh air to see that these girls really are student athletes, you know. So I have a couple of players that I just wanted to mention here that have done a wonderful job. Like Superintendent Gojo said, we normally would select the players that have impacted both during playing, but also their, you know, their performance as a leader in the team. And we'll submit it to the coaches' association and they will select who is, who, who, who is picked as basically, you know, fourth, what we call, you're basically fourth team, second team, and third team. So the second team for this year is Makela Raiso. Makela is our forward. She scored about six goals this year, which is great. And that team was Megan Whit. Megan is just a walker. You know, what I, you know, I call her my blue-collar walker in the midfield. She, she will run, she will help anybody. She does all the dirty work. But like with any sports, you know, football, if you're not doing the, throwing the ball or, or, you know, catching the touchdown. Soccer, if you're not scoring, nobody recognizes you in the field. But Megan is just one of those players that is, you know, puts a lot of effort and gives an impact in every single game. And then the fourth team was Yasen Juuf. Yasen is our defender. She actually almost made it to the all-state selection. But there was another senior that actually, from another school, that we decided to give it to that senior because it's there last year. We also have two other awards. One of the awards is All Academy, which is Chloe Bryan. And this year, the girls' board decided to have really the most improved player in each team. And for North Providence, we picked Carly. Carly, I'm gonna butcher the last name, but it's Aliola. A-C-C-A-I-O-L-S. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you, Coach. Thank you, Coach. Coach, I just want to mention, I was very proud of the fact that I was part of the hiring process when I was principal of the high school that brought you onboard. You've done a lot for soccer in the town of North Providence as well. And I know, just hearing from the girls over the years, they thoroughly, thoroughly respect you and enjoy playing for you. So the fact that you have so many student athletes making the honor roll is really what it's all about. So again, we wanted to thank you for that. Thank you for what you've continued to do for our student athletes and for acknowledging them here this evening. Congratulations to all of the athletes who have been sent a citation from the North Providence School Committee that they will receive over the next day or two when they are in school. So those citations have already been sent to the athletes. So thank you to the coaches and to the athletes.
Congratulations, Kaba.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good job.
Next item on the agenda, I would like a motion to approve the MOA with Local 1033 and 2435 regarding authorized leaves of absences in COVID-19. As you know, we have, we have an agreement in place that we finalized early in the school year with the teachers' union. And then we realized, obviously, that there were other COVID impacts affecting other, other bargaining units. So recently, myself, Human Resources Director Matthew Hicks, Mrs. Van Avery, and our attorney Ben Scungeal worked closely with the heads of all of these unions to basically adapt an MOU that meets the needs of our employees and some of the circumstances that arise that are unique to COVID. So I would ask the school committee to approve the MOUs as presented.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. De Silva, seconded by Mr. Pollak. It was Miss Andriozzi?
Yes, sir.
Okay, are there any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Before we get into the next item, Mr. Gojo, I just want to summarize for the committee so we're all have an understanding of where we are with the, with the budget prior to motion to approve. At our last meeting, we approved recommended cuts of $181,317. With that cut, and Lisa, correct me if I'm wrong. With that cut, our budget increase was 4.97%. We're asking from the town $1,5,660, which is a 3.06% increase. So the overall total budget that we would be voting on this evening will be $61,588,107. Is that correct, Mrs. Cassinelli?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on anything that I just said relative to the budget? Okay, hearing none. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the budget. Motion by De Silva.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corsini and with Mrs. Picard. No?
Yeah, I have discussion. I want, I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead. We have a motion and a second. Questions, Mrs. Picard?
So I had spewed a posting for the finance department, for the school department. And I was curious about, is that the budget position? And was that budgeted for? Is that replacing a position? I wasn't clear about what it was for. And I didn't know it was, I saw it and wasn't sure what it was.
I'm not aware of any posting for any position.
Because it's, it's posted on school. And the interesting thing is-
That's for the town hall. That's for town hall.
Did you say it's North Providence School Department?
Yeah, it's for town hall.
Yeah, Gina, the town is hiring someone in their finance office. And I guess they went out earlier on their own and did not get a large pool of applicants. So they asked if we would advertise it on school spring for them about a week or two ago.
So that's why it says the school department? On that bottom, like on that? Just so I-
I believe so, yes. I know it's for the town hall.
So there's, there's no coordination with that job with us all the time?
No, it's strictly their position. They asked us to advertise on school spring through our platform.
And I'm good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, I'll turn it back to Mr. Gojo.
Next item on the agenda is the Assistant Superintendent's Report. And at this time, Mrs. Sight Singer will highlight one or two of the most noteworthy- one or two of the most noteworthy initiatives that she cites in her monthly newsletter, and I believe she's going to focus a little bit on the spelling bee. And what a great success that was. I would really like to thank Mrs. Seitzinger and her committee, Principal Bruce Butler, and Principals TJ Mellon and Brian Gilmore as well for the tremendous job organizing it and serving as judges and of course, all of the participants. So in this COVID age, to be able to still have the spelling bee and to do it virtually and have it to be so much fun, it really was an enjoyable event. So I'd like to thank everybody for pulling it off. And at this point, I'll turn it over to Mrs. Seitzinger for a little bit more information.
Thank you, Superintendent Goho, and good evening, everyone. Chairperson Palada and members of the school committee. Yeah, it was a great event, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of things about that. And congratulations again to our district winner, Max Ramirez, in grade eight from Birchwood. And the runner-up was Nina O'Mano. She's from grade eight from Ritchie Middle School. So you met Max tonight. They really did an amazing job, as Mr. Goho said. And now the winner of our district spelling bee, Max, will move on to the Rhode Island State Competition, which is currently scheduled for March 12th at 3:00 PM. So that was a great event, and we wanted to continue the tradition that we've had in our district with that. Couple of other things, you can see here, I'm highlighting the things that I usually do with curriculum and distance learners, but I wanted to mention one statistic in regards to our distance learners. So we've been current about 30% for our students K to 12 in distance learning, and now it's at 27.5%. So we're getting more kids to come back, which is a positive thing, especially as we go into our state assessment periods. I wanted to mention that. And that's a tribute to our principals and our teachers for really working hard on getting that, our students back in the district. Couple of other things, we served over 3,700 meals over the February vacation and will continue to do so over the April vacation. So I wanted to mention that because our food service does a wonderful job with that. And then finally, as I said, we're getting tested, we're getting, you know, prepared for our state testing, which will begin later in March and go on to May and beginning of June, April, obviously, also. We're completing our access testing now for our students. And that's been a great amount of work for our ELL team, our multilingual learner team, and also some of our reading specialists who have been trained in access testing. So I want to thank them personally for all their hard work. Also, we'll be sending out information to parents regarding state assessments. And Rhode Island Department of Ed is expecting all students to participate in person, and we will be stating that to parents as such. And I gave you just the timelines there for all the state testing dates. And I just want to mention one more thing, too. We launched our social emotional learning website this week, and we're really proud of that. And I want to thank Kristen Gold and Jen DePalma, who worked on that website for me. And every week we'll be highlighting some wonderful resources for both staff and students as well. So I want to thank them for that, and that's it.
Yep, Mrs. Seitzinger, just a quick question. The social emotional learning site that you set up, obviously, there's been a lot of discussion across the country how COVID has impacted students socially. Can you just, just give us a general sense of North Providence in terms of the, the impact? Positive, negative?
That's a very complex question, but I'll do my best to answer it. And what I will say is that at the beginning of the year, through our re-entry plan, part of it needed to address social emotional learning, and Ms. Van Avery, can please chime in if you want. So what we did was we, through the social workers who developed screenings for our students. So every day, students check in, whether they're distance learners or they are in-person learners based on the competencies of CASL, which is a social emotional learning framework. So that means we're checking in and making sure that kids are feeling comfortable, stable, safe. And if they're not, then teachers address that on a personal level. So that happens at elementary, middle school. The high school does it a little bit differently. But I want to commend our staff for the great work they've done with that. Because one thing we found through the surveys that I did last year was that obviously, students need to feel connected and that they belong, and parents wanted that as well. They wanted to have more of that direct contact. So that's one of the things that we've done, besides the work that is done directly at the schools by the support teams and by the general behavioral programs that are at all schools. That's a start, but I will say that we've seen some, as every district has, some very traumatic situations occurring on, on, on the family levels, and we're going to continue to work with, with families and supports as we move forward. So I just wanted to say that we, we will continue to strengthen our support at the school level.
Well, thank you and the staff for setting that up and being proactive regarding that issue. It's, it's critically important. Thank you again.
Yeah. I think Mrs. Picard has a question.
Mrs. Picard.
Hi, Louise. I have a question regarding the testing and the communication to families of those, as you know, those that have selected in-person learning, want in-person learning. So whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, what, and obviously, it'll be more impacted in elementary and middle, when the families have to have schedules created, what are the chances that that would be impacted in moving kids to distance learning because of testing, or can we avoid that?
I think we're going to try to avoid that. We want them in person. I mean, that's what, as you know, that's what Rhode Island Department of Ed is telling us.
Saying, for example, because there, I know there are some districts thinking about saying, and I think RIDE tries to make things seem simpler than they are. Oh, you, you could use, you can put grade five all on distance learning for a couple of days and bring only grade four in and things like that. And I think parents are worried about this, what the testing schedule could do to in-person learning and learning period if it's disjointed. So I, I recognize that this is really complex. So I just want to make sure that whatever we do, that it's thoughtful around the communications so families understand that, and that we try to keep the in-person learning as consistent as possible and not move toward DL without, as long as we don't have to. Because, as you know, we need them in school.
Absolutely. We're working on scheduling right now, as you know, and, and resources, you know, coming through. So I'm working with our school principals on just that. So we're certainly going to do the best that we can do. You know, the high school's a different situation, so we may have to adjust and adapt there. But obviously, at the elementary level especially, we want our students in person, and we don't want to deviate too much from their schedule as such, because it's been very difficult, and we're trying to keep it as coherent and consistent as possible. So yes, I totally agree with you.
Thank you.
And, and we will be communicating that very clearly to parents.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Seitzinger. We have item number eight, no school committee reports. Number nine, no all business. New business, item A, committee assignments. Going to have two committees. Policy Subcommittee to nominate Mrs. Picard, Mr. De Silva, and Mr. Marciano. And for a negotiation Subcommittee, Mr. Corsini, Mr. Andriozzi, and Mr. Pollak. And the District Health and Wellness Committee, going to assign Mr. Pollak to that District Health and Wellness Committee. If we need any specialized committees, we'll form those as the year go, as the year goes on. But for now, we'll have this, those two standing committees. Any questions on that? Thank you. Item B, discussion approval of COVID-19 vaccine policy. Before we move to discuss this, well, I'm going to have Mr. Scungeal speak to this first, so you have the full information of the facts behind the creation of the, of the policy. I know that I had several questions that I spoke to Mr. Scungeal about, and he gave me some clarity on it. So I'd like to have him speak to the policy in terms of particularly the, the mandates for the vaccine for staff and students. Mr. Scungeal.
Hello, everyone.
Hi, Ben.
The issue has come up about, now that we have vaccines and they're beginning to, to, to be generally available more and more to people throughout the state of Rhode Island, is to what steps the committee may want to take to make sure that staff and more importantly, students are going to school in a safe environment. Because as the numbers continue to, to drop and vaccine becomes more and more prevalent, you're going to be moving clearly towards more in-student direct services of education in classroom, excuse me. So in response to that, we put together this policy, which brings the issue up to the school committee as to whether or not it would want to require, to the extent it's legally permissible, staff and students to take the vaccine. Now, under state law, students have an exemption for religious and for medical reasons. Additionally, under federal law, I think under certain circumstances, if someone has a disability, either under the ADA or 504 or IDEA for special ed students, they may also have a medical reason for not having a vaccine. Other than those circumstances, this policy requires all students to have a vaccine and to, when it's timely available to them, so this reasonability period locked into it. With respect to a vaccine for employees, it's essentially the same, except there are no state exemptions currently to opt out of a vaccine. So I believe based on the, the General Enabling Act for school committees, since you have an obligation to keep the workplace safe, that you can also require as a term of employment that, that employees, excuse me, be vaccinated. There's also exemption language in the policy with respect to employees to allow them to be exempt for essentially the same reasons that students can. And any other time either the Department of Health or the CDC says that a vaccine or an immunization is not appropriate for an individual. And that would basically revolve around medical reasons or again, around disability reasons under the ADA or Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. So it was constructed around those things. It sets out, this sets out just the general policy statement that anybody who works or attends school in the school district shall have a vaccine essentially, if they're able to get it, and if they qualify for it medically. And the methods by which that happens would be through the development of a protocol with the superintendent, through the superintendent. That protocol, if you pass this policy or something like it, could come back to the committee for their review. But essentially, that would be constructed by the superintendent with some advice from me and from Matt to make sure that it's workable in the district. Additionally, it provides for outreach and student and staff engagement if it's necessary to, to explain the benefits of immunization for, for students and for staff and for their, their families. And it also provides for remediation and compliance efforts that the superintendent thinks appropriate. Now, I know naturally, the question comes up, what happens if you have an employee who just decides, I don't believe in vaccines, so I'm just not going to take it? I think you have the ability in that case to issue discipline or to require someone to remove themselves from the workplace if you decide to do that. You can also grant people waiver on, which we could incorporate into a protocol if that's necessary. I don't think that waiver is a good idea based on personal choice, because that opens the door then to anybody who would not want to have a vaccine, just simply doesn't have to have it. And it would be potentially a safety risk to themselves or to someone else. As we've seen across the country before COVID-19 hit, there's this anti-vax kind of concept. We have people believe that all vaccines are wrong and they're not healthy and people shouldn't take them. And the result of that is we've seen a recurrence of a lot of childhood diseases that have started to, to explode in a way we hadn't seen in the last 40 or 50 years. So this is also, this is an attempt at the front end of this to kind of get a hold of it and for the committee to set out a policy position as to what they expect their staff to do. I anticipate that you'll see widespread approval by the unions for a policy like this. Because as you know, a lot of the constituency groups, staff members as well as teachers have been lobbying to be a high priority in order to get the vaccine so they could feel comfortable coming back to a safe school. So that's it. I'm happy to respond to any questions or any issues the committee may have, and then you can discuss whether or not you want to pursue it.
Thank you, Mr. Scungeal. Mrs., Mrs. Picard?
Thank you. Ben, a couple of questions. One, and I know Massachusetts, they made mandatory for the flu shot. And I, and our state didn't take that direction as a state, which meant that we would take it, we, we could take it on as LEAs. If we were going to pursue the COVID vaccination policy, why wouldn't we want to include the flu? Well, I mean, we didn't have to. I'm just saying, would it, like, would it be in our best interest to look at both at that point?
I, I think that's a good idea. I think you can do it. The flu hasn't had as much of a deleterious effect, obviously. You know, you got 500, 500,000 people who have passed away. It's probably the flu is about one-tenth of that amount in any given year. So this is substantially more deadly, and I think that the CDC right now is just starting to calculate the after effects of people who've had it. And you're going to find there's substantial and prolonged after effects as well. So it's a more substantial type of disease. But you could consider the flu. I don't think there's as much of an impetuous to do that, to force people to take a vaccine. But you could, from a policy point of view, I think you'd have to rely on some data to do that. Maybe we'd want to talk to our nurses or have someone from the Department of Health give us some data to help us with that for us.
Yeah, I'm just curious. I mean, we, we all heard the push for the flu shots from the Department of Health. And I'm just thinking if we're, and I, I completely agree with the COVID-19, obviously, we're dealing with a very different kind of thing than we have with the flu in the past. But I, I think about like the, the H1N1 that came out, we know, about 10 years ago. And that was not as bad, but it, it definitely was a similar case where we had the, that's where we started the mass clinics at the schools. So I'm just thinking it may be of interest of us to take a, take a look into it. But when, in the bottom section of the policy where it talks about, there was two things, and I'm thinking if we move forward, pulling out sort of that staff and student, because I, I don't necessarily think it's clear. I think we could, I could perceive it to be clear, or assume, that when we say institute mandatory DL, we're talking about specifically students. And when we say corporate discipline, we're talking about staff. But just so it's clear, families and community that we may want to siphon that out a little.
Okay.
And then just in, there's an, the word and is missing in Section Three, that first number one. But when, it should be when and, and as, like, just like the second one, but it's just missing in the end. But I know this is a draft.
No, thank you. That's my, that's my miss.
Mr. Pollak? Mr. Pollak?
Hey, Ben, I'm just curious. Other districts have looked into this or implemented this or in the process of implementing something like this?
So I've, I've drafted this for a half dozen districts, and they're all actively considering it right now. But I think you are the first one that I know about that will have passed it. Or considered it at a public meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I just have a question. The people who would have medical or religious reasons, do we have to provide documentation to the school department?
Yes. That would, that would come in the protocol, and we'd have to figure out what reasonable information would be. We wouldn't want it just to be a conclusory statement from a doctor, because we wouldn't know for sure. We probably would come up with a form that would be similar to the Department of Health form that currently exists right now for people to opt out, but it only applies to students right now. So we would probably use some version of that for our staff.
Okay, thank you. Okay. The chair will entertain a motion with the amendment by Mrs. Picard. Would you make that motion, Mrs. Picard, with your amendment?
I was actually wondering if we could do it more as a first read. I, I don't, I just, I, I think, like, to Ben's point, I definitely think it's a direction that I would, I think is important, but I, I'd like to have more time just to think it through about, because we're not there yet, right? But I, I, for our students at least, I just want to make sure that we're capturing all of it. I haven't, I haven't had the opportunity, and we have no public comment, and I think that's a concern as well. So I'd like to give at least the public one more opportunity to talk to us about that before we pass it. I just think it's quick, and I think people are still wrapping their heads around it.
Any other comments? Well, the chair will entertain a motion either to approve or table.
Can we do it as a first read, Ben? I mean, typically, we don't have to have a motion automatically. Why can't we do it as a first read?
Because we don't do that anymore.
That's not true. We said that we didn't have to do it only as a first read. We have the opportunity to have as many reads as we need.
How do we call seeing that? How do we call seeing that in any, any policy?
The bylaws, it's what, it's, we have an opportunity.
We did away with, we did away with the second and third reads, but.
But you don't need them.
To tabling it and putting it on the next agenda with any input from any committee member. Mr. De Silva?
I was going to say, I'll make a motion to have it tabled so we're not ready to add this. If Mrs. Picard thinks the public needs another look see at it. I mean, is this imminent? Are we ready to vaccinate? Or this will be for months from now?
Well, it depends on, it depends on the, the age of your staff. So those that are 65 and older would have the ability now to at least sign up for a vaccine. But I think that, that's probably oh, two weeks to a month in terms of general availability, because people are snapping up appointments pretty quickly.
And I think it's starting to loosen up because I've got one Saturday. I, Mr. Pollack, I think knows a little bit more about the vaccination and how it's flowing, so.
Yeah, I, I, I'm actually inclined to support Gina's decision just to at least table this for a month, so more people can digest this and maybe the public would have some comment. I, you know, I'm definitely pro-vaccine. I, I receive my vaccines. But I, I think, you know, this is a little more involved and I, I think everybody should have a chance to just digest it. I have no problem at least in the next meeting, just tabling it to the next meeting.
Motion by Mrs. Silva. Is there a second to that? Mr. Pollack? Any additional questions or comments?
I have a question.
Mr. Andriozzi?
So my question is, I don't understand how we could vote on it anyway, because we don't have in place the protocols if someone should opt out of it. Mr. Scunjo said that he would draft something for religious reasons and for other reasons that they would choose not to take it. We don't even have that in place yet, so how could we?
Well, I think that already exists for religious reasons. It's already on the book.
Well, he, he just said, a- and also for people who just chose not to take it, we wouldn't take a doctor's note per se. You would need something more in depth, but he hadn't figured out exactly what that would be. He said he would be inclined to follow Department of Health's recommendations. But we don't have that in place.
Ben, you want to explain that?
So if the committee, if the committee passed this policy, and whatever you want to do is fine. I don't have a horse in the race about whether or not you vote on it tonight or really ever. But that would be basically a requirement that the superintendent would then develop a protocol. Then that protocol would come back to the committee to look at.
So then how do we enforce somebody to take it if they, if we say to them, if they come back to us and say, for religious reasons or my doctor says I shouldn't, we, we have no, there is no bite to the policy. There's nothing there. So everyone can say they don't want to take it. And then Mr. Goho would have to come up with a protocol that would have to come back to us anyway.
Well, the sequence is up to you guys, but we will, if you want to move ahead with the policy, we'll go ahead with the protocol and then have that available for the committee to, to look at. The, the object is to try to get everything in place in time for when vaccines are widely available to everyone. And this would help facilitate situation in which you could start to bring all students back to school.
I understand that part. I just thought that we should have it all as one group. And then the policy and the protocol are out there and it's, there's no disputing it. This is, this is it. This is our policy. And this is what we require for you if you choose not to follow our guidelines. This is what you have to present to us. It, it just seems like it's a little vague right now.
So you're suggesting on the next review that there'd be a protocol attached?
Yeah, that's, that's my thought process. Okay. Now we vote and it's just a clean sweep and it's done.
Okay. Mr. De Silva?
Yes, so was the original intention of this vote tonight to vote on putting the policy together and bringing it back next month? Vote on the policy? Are we voting on one that doesn't actually exist yet?
I don't understand the question.
All right, so it says discussion approval COVID-19 vaccine policy. Was, was the intention for us to vote on that tonight to approve a policy? Or was the intention of our vote tonight to approve the putting together of the policy?
It was to approve.
Ben, do you want me to answer?
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
I'm sorry, what did you just say?
It was to approve the policy. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, potentially. As you guys mentioned, this has become obviously a very timely issue. So in our superintendents' meetings, we, we've been advised to begin having this conversation within our communities. Because as, as was mentioned, the vaccines are becoming more widely available. So the question was asked of districts at a recent RISA meeting, how many districts are entertaining a policy to mandate vaccines? Pretty much all of the superintendents responded that they were. We were advised by members of RIDE who were on the, on the committee as well, I mean, on the call as well, that we should start to have these conversations now and signal to our employees that this is coming, so that they can become prepared. And then as, as, as appointments become available in the age group, they may opt to get the vaccine and sign up for them in a timely manner. The, the policy as it's written would require employees to get the vaccine within a reasonable period of time. Doesn't mean immediate, doesn't mean right away. It doesn't mean that because the eligibility for people aged 65 is now open that you have to go within the next two weeks to get your vaccine. It just means, it just means within a reasonable period of time. Unless you have a documented medical issue or a religious issue, you have to, you know, get the vaccine. So we wanted to get this issue out there as soon as possible, let the committee lay eyes on it, signal to the public that we could be, like many districts across the state, moving in this direction and get the ball rolling. Some district, there are other districts who have already adopted the policy, which you could do, choose to do tonight. Or as has been suggested, get a few other pieces together, a few more eyes on it and then pass it or not pass it shortly. But obviously, it's a timely issue that we wanted to get the ball rolling on and start that discussion.
Yeah, I, I, I think with all the information we've received tonight and, and the comments, I think tabling this to the next meeting, I think would be good. We could have all the information that people ask Mr. Andriozzi, et cetera, and maybe get any feedback that we may anticipate coming in. But I mean, obviously, we all want to get the children, everybody back safe. I don't think tabling this for one more meeting would be a bad thing. That's just my opinion.
And I can also add, I think you guys are all aware. Currently, the vaccine, one vaccine is, I think it's the Moderna vaccine, is approved for students 18 and older. So that would apply to high school students. I think the Pfizer vaccine is approved for students 16 and older. I don't anticipate that students below those ages would be approved by, by the CDC for vaccine approval until summer or fall, from what we're hearing. So right now, this would apply in the short term to employees.
Mr. Silva?
So let's, I agree, let's table, let's get all the stakeholders aware of what we're doing, get them involved. And next meeting, we can just go forward with this.
Yeah, I won't even suggest that it be, I mean, unfortunately with Zoom, our public comments has, have not been, most school committees have very robust public comments. The way we do it, I think people are not clear that they have to do it ahead of time sometimes. They just can't raise their hand during public comments. I think with the, with the vaccination, we want to be clear. I think we should reiterate to our families how they do make public comment, because people have asked me how it works. I just think that we may, it may behoove us to be transparent in a very big way so that no one can say we tried to do it quickly or we weren't thoughtful, just reminding people how they can get on public comments if they have it, because.
I don't, I don't think that's intention. I don't think that's intention.
No, I do, I don't, but I do think, we haven't had any, since the reopening conversation, there's not had been any, any really like big items that people would have questions about. And I think this would be one of them. And I want to make sure that we're, we're mindful of the fact that it would not hurt us to remind people how to access public comments if they do.
Okay, I'll move with a question.
So, so I would assume that Ralph will notify us if there's somebody online that would like to speak relative to any of the issues on the agenda. Is that correct, Ralph?
Just to clarify, Dr. Pallado, only when you say public comment or any comments from the public, I'll then address. Sometimes it's people that just raise their hand when you're in the middle of speaking where there's no, or a topic where there's no public comment. So I don't want to chime in with those people's names that their hands are raised. I always wait for you to say, time for comment? And then I interject with somebody that has their hand raised. And I believe Norma Jean does put on the agenda that goes to the Secretary of State that has instructions about raising their hand if they're only using the phone, where they have to hit star nine or star six. I can't think of it off the top of my head. So we do give that instruction in there.
It's just that we're not practicing that. Dr. Pallado will say, no, there are no public comments. And we, he says at every meeting, so it looks like they have to do it ahead of time only. So I just think that we need to clarify.
Well, they notify, they notify Norma Jean on the public comment.
Yeah, we're not a public.
I received that information. That's how I reported out. Okay.
We have a right as a public to comment during our meetings. And it, it's very hard in this format. They're not, like Ralph said, there's not an opportunity. They don't feel like, if they feel, if they don't, if they haven't emailed Norma Jean, they don't get to speak. And I don't think that's our intent, but that's the way it's coming across. That's why I'm asking for the clarification for something like this, because I think this would, they, they need to know how to do that so it's very clear.
So we have, we have one or two choices. We can, there's a motion on the floor to table. If we table, is it the committee's pleasure to send a notification to the parents that this, this policy will be discussed at the next meeting? And they're welcome to comment on it? Or do we continue to post it as we normally post it? Secretary of State's office? Or the third suggestion is, you know, I would depend on Ralph that if anybody wants to speak to the issue on the public comment, just cut in and let me know when we get to the section. So we have a, we have a motion on the floor to table. Let's do that.
I, I second that motion to table.
Okay. And Mr. De Silva made the motion, I believe. And Mr. Andriozzi seconded the motion. Any other questions on the motion to table? Hearing on all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries?
Aye.
is it viable to, because of the importance of this, of this policy, notify parents and students relative to our discussion of this policy? Send that information out?
I'm not, I'm not so sure of the parents, because now you're going to, like, like, Mr. Goho just said that children under 18 are really not advised to get the vaccination anyway. I think more importantly is the teachers and, and coaches and all these other people that are involved. They need to be here. Those are the stakeholders.
Staff, staff and high school students?
But I do think, what I would think we should do minimally for our families is remind them that when, when the school committee meets, if you have a public comment, this is how you access and that you can speak during the meeting. I think that's where it's not clear, because we, every, if you go back to the recordings and they're right, every time it says there's no public comment, there's no public comment. Every time, and, and except for that reopening meeting. And I think what they believe is that's, if they didn't email Norma Jean, there's no opportunity. And so I would hate, and luckily, we haven't had any issues because we haven't had any really big items. But I do think that we want to make sure, especially as things like this come along and we would maybe see our middle school kids and our high school kids getting vaccinated, that we are clear about how, yes, you can speak during a meeting. And when an item comes up, that, you know, Dr. Pallado can simply let Ralph know, or Ralph can say, you have five hands, Dr. Pallado. Would you like me to call on them? I think that needs to be clarified for our families, how to access us. Because that's where the, at least, that's the comments I've received. And I went back and they're right.
Well, for the record, I've seen no.
And that's, I mean.
Nor have I.
So Ralph, can I ask you a question during our meetings? Do you see hands go up? And then we just, you just are not able to call on them because there's not an opportunity that, that is clear for you?
Normally, not when you're discussing these things. Like earlier though, when they were talking about the spelling bee or something like that. It's not when you were on a actual item number. It's usually when they just, when he discusses, you know, something that he talks like, like the names he did this morning, earlier with the.
Under public comment, Ralph, do you see hands go up?
No hands go up during the public comment. No, when you add, when you say there's no public comment, nothing goes up then.
Okay.
For a topic that's not an agenda item, like you're discussing now, you know what I mean?
Dr. Pallado, can I explain something? When I get public comments, when people contact me for them, they know that there's that one place on the agenda that they can speak. They tell me ahead of time what item it is that they want to speak about. So you'll know when number five comes up and the comments on numbered five through 14, you'll know that this person wants to speak on, say, number eight on, on the agenda. And then you let them speak on it at that point. That's like the rules of order that I know of, of school committee. That's when they can speak.
Dr. Pallado?
Any item, any item on the agenda. Now I'll be quiet, but that's.
So when we had our meetings live, we would have a sheet where people could commit if they want some public comments, they could sign in. Maybe when we get to the portion of the, when you say there's no public comments on the agenda, maybe at that point, we just ask public, anybody in the public like to make a comment on any of these items tonight? And, and then we know, like, maybe we find out what item agenda they want to comment on? And that should solve that, that issue. So just. What's that?
Fair enough. I'm good with that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, Ralph.
I'm sorry, Mr. Pollack. Like, right now, I have an attendee's hand raise. Mike Cicero's hand is raised. But I don't know if it's, this is the, like, do I jump in like I interrupt you right now because somebody has their hand raised in a place where somebody doesn't normally have.
Right. So my, my point, at least moving forward after tonight, this, when we get to that portion of public comment, we have, we'd say hypothetically, we had nobody signed in at a meeting. But if we had someone sign the sheet, just replace that sign-in sheet with maybe asking at that portion of the agenda. Any public, anybody in the public like to speak on any item agenda tonight? Find out what item agenda, when we get to that item, then they can speak.
Yeah, no, I think it's a fair point. And I think when we come to item number five, which is public comments, and we'll just open it at that time, whether or not they submitted any information or not.
Just find out what item agenda and then we'll get to that.
That's fine. I'm good with that. Ralph, you said somebody had their hand up?
Yes, Mike Cicero is in there with his hand up.
Yeah, you can let him on.
Hi, guys. I just wanted to comment that Chuck was right and so was Gina. When public comments come up on section five, I have no idea what's coming up for 10B. And I didn't feel it was appropriate for me to ask, what is this policy all about? Back in section five, people won't know how to, how to access this comment. And this is the first time I'm hearing of some of the implications of this policy. And I wouldn't have been prepared to, to make a comment until now. And I'm still not prepared, because we don't know what this policy looks like.
Now, Mike, see, I've, all the people that had to get their hand up, it had to be you. I let you in.
Imagine, I have to actually agree with you.
I can't, lightning will strike, Mike.
On a recorded meeting, I have to agree with you.
It's bound to happen every now and then.
Well, you know, it's all new territory for everybody. I think everybody has legitimate points. You know, we'll, we'll create the clarity of all that.
And I think everyone here is well-intended. I just want to say that. I just think that we're not realizing like how other people are seeing it. Like, and I, I had people say to me, when do you do it? And I'm like, I don't know what you mean. And when I went back, I'm like, okay, I, I, I probably, you know, and then I, when it came up tonight, I said, I'm going to pay attention to it. And, and it, and it happened again. So I said, you know what, probably with the vaccination, I think it's a bigger deal. Not that everything's not a big deal, but just be mindful.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to end up with an earful tomorrow. You can guarantee that. But it does say on the agenda that if you have any questions or comments, you need to email at that email address during the public comment section. So most people would have missed that.
Okay, well, we're looking, we're looking to improve that. It was this, like I said. like I said, going virtual as opposed to coming in public and signing in. So hopefully we can rectify that moving forward.
And I think not, not long.
And hopefully we don't have to meet virtually too much longer to eliminate that anyways.
But I do think that we wanted to, I, I, I agree with Chuck, that rewarding of, it can't just be Norma Jean. It has to be here, how, how you access public comment. Because like Chuck's point before, you could see the hands being raised and with the panel, only Ralph can see it. And to Ralph's point too, it's hard for him to know, so he needs our direction as well.
Right.
You can throw me out now.
Dr. Pallada. Dr. Pallada.
Hey, Mike.
Dr. Pallada. Mr. Goho. Yeah, with all due respect to Mike, and I, I don't mean to be antagonistic when I say this, but um, Mike said this is the first time he's hearing of this. He may not be aware of the details of the policy, although the agenda came out on Friday, we certainly would have been able to uh give him a copy had he requested it. But um, we did have a conversation, a general conversation, myself, Matt Hicks and Mike in Matt's office um, about the fact that we were in the process of drafting a policy that would require employees and students to uh be mandated, to be vaccinated and that there would be exemptions um as, as guided by federal law. So I'm sure, I know Mike is saying that he didn't know the details of the policy. That's accurate. But this is not the first time that he was aware that this was coming out. I just wanted to clarify.
To clarify, I did not say it was not the first time that I did, I heard about the policy. I said it was the first time I heard the details of the policy.
That's, that's what I just said.
Okay, um, you know, this certainly might raise the issue of maybe not having three readings as we had in the past, but maybe two readings might be in order. Uh, and get public comment in between all of that. So that's something to think about as we go along.
I just, I just say that the way you guys devise the bylaws, you have the flexibility to do either. So if, if, if a policy that is being read is expedient and needs to be implemented uh quickly because it's an emergency, you have the ability to do that. But you also have the ability to do exactly what you do tonight, did tonight, which was to table it for a first read and move it to a second read. So you have the flexibility to do either or as the bylaws are currently written that you guys revised recently.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we had that motion and we can vote on that. Correct, all Jean? Took the vote.
So did you just vote to table it or are you voting it?
We voted to, we voted to table it and bring it back
As a second.
At the next meeting. And we, we will follow a procedure under public comment. I will offer that public comment to anyone through Ralph that has their hand open, whether they submit something that's written or not written.
Okay.
Got it? That what everybody understands? Okay, good.
Oh, there we go.
Thank you for your comments on that. Very good. Thank you.
My headphones off.
Uh, item C, uh, discussion regarding the letter from Durham. Uh, I spoke to uh Goho, I also spoke to Mr. Spunjo regarding this. And what I've asked them to do is uh, in light of the latest correspondence that we received with some fiscal information on there, uh, we, we, we agreed that some of that information may not be totally correct. Uh, one example being, I believe that we need to make some payments in March. Um, correct me if I'm wrong, Lisa. That bring down that total number that you have there of two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars uh in that area.
It's actually about the same amount because what happened was they, we did pay the March invoice, but we hadn't yet received the June invoice, which we now have. So it, it works out to be about the same amount of money that we, they initially said we opened up for the, for the remaining months.
Okay, thank you. So we, we still need to validate some of this fiscal information before we make a decision on it. Uh, I've asked them to put a fiscal note together, which I'll present to you either as a special meeting or at next meeting. Uh, but I still think some more fiscal information is to be either corrected or validated from our perspective. Um, we have to make sure we have correct information regarding reference field trips and the cost of the field trips, when those field trips occurred. So once we get all that, then we'll, we'll put it on the agenda, review it and discuss it and then make a determination at that point. Any questions on that?
So my question, are you tabling this? Is that, is that what this is right now?
Well, we're just discussing it at this point. We're not taking any action. Do we get more information?
The actual number that's in this letter is three hundred and one thousand, not two hundred and sixty-nine. The actual number in the letter totals three hundred and one thousand dollars. That's the payment they're looking for.
Right. Because of the percent and all that, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
But you also, you know, take into consideration um the old contract versus the new contract. Um, and the amount of credit that we got in the new contract.
I, I, I get that. But the original agreement, uh, I'm not, I, if I, I can't remember what Mr. Spunjo had negotiated, but I don't remember it being three oh one.
No.
I thought I remember it being a lot lower than that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that's why we're still in the process of trying to finalize that before we.
So we're not, we're not paying them for any of this, correct? She, she just said she had.
We're not gonna do any, until the full committee takes a vote on it.
Okay. Understood.
It's reviewed and by the committee and a vote is taken on it. Okay? Next item on the agenda, item eleven is approval of bills.
So moved.
Motion. Second. I'm sorry, who made the motion?
Steve made the motion.
Mr. Andriozzi.
I've made the second. I have the discussion.
Norma Jean and Mr. Andriozzi made the motion. Mr. De Silva's second. Discussion.
Yes, very quickly, in the uh, in the interest of brevity, I did um send some questions about the budget to, uh, excuse me, the bills to um Finance Director and I received answers. And, and I'm not going to go through them tonight. Some of those had to do with time clocks and um automatic heat, those kinds of things. But my um overriding question I do have though is, when we have work done and whether it's in-house or somebody, a vendor coming in, do we have a record of the licenses and all of the certificates that they have for insurance purposes? So if somebody comes in, whether it's one of our people works on a boiler and uh something goes wrong and they're not, they're, they're not, they're not certified or they don't have the license or they're not insured and then the trust doesn't want to cover. So do we have that all in place?
Mr. Castenelli or Mr. Goho?
Um, I, I know we do have some certificates of insurance and I know a lot of the vendors that we use have their license information and everything right on their invoices. Um, because certainly to do work on some of the boilers, and I think Mr. Faroli can attest to this also, um, you need to be licensed in the so, the software that is used on these boiler systems. So I'm, I'm certain that they're, they're properly licensed. Um.
So what if it's an employee? Do we have all of those certificates and license or whatever they need to go into our buildings and work on our, on our machines?
Well, since, since they're town employees, um, technically because we share them, I don't know if the town has, has that stuff on record. I don't know if, if Mr. Faroli's on it. Oh, Ralph, maybe it's gonna answer it.
Now, we have everybody's license, they, and, and it's not licensed, it's registered. So you have to be registered and insured. Everybody who works for us, either a vendor or uh town employees are licensed and um registered and insured.
Perfect, because my thinking was if there was an issue and we had to go to the trust, then the trust looks at who did the work and the work was done, and I don't want to say by shade tree, but was not done properly in terms of having all the i's dotted and the t's crossed with licenses, then we'd be on the uh.
Yep, no, I got it all covered.
Perfect, thank you. And I, I'm not gonna ask any more questions about any of the other questions I asked you, Ms. Castenelli, because you gave me all, I'm satisfied.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item twelve, use of property.
Motion approved.
By Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Andriozzi. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Norma Jean, we have no request to address the committee. Item fourteen, we have no pending business. Item fifteen, take a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Pollak, second by Ms. Andriozzi. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, everyone. Stay safe.
Got it.
Good night.